Something like that. Bonjour tout le monde, je m'appelle Skylar et bienvenue à cet programme. Bienvenue au programme. Mon programme, ma programme, mon programme ? Uh... This is the Skylar Learns French Show. Skylar Learns French, yes he does. My name is Skylar. I'm trying to learn French. I don't know what I'm doing. Uh, welcome. Today is... Le 4e juillet. It's the 4th of July. And uh, I'm on a 30-day challenge to learn French every single day. And no holiday can stop me. Should be out barbecuing, drinking, blowing things up. But I am here because I am dedicated. Sweet crude is dedicated to advancing French, Louisiana French, all over the world. And I'm playing my part today. So um, welcome. Uh, also, what a great way to celebrate American imperialism. Uh... By learning some French! Uh, no, it's gonna be fun. We got a, I got a good thing going today, I think. Um, so let's get into it. Uh, today, on the 30-minute episode, uh, I'm going to jump into um, some corrections that people have been giving me. Um, do that real fast. Then we're gonna blow through our Chapter 1 flashcards. I'm gonna try to read all of the sentences in my book. Out loud. Again, making noises with my mouth. Um, and there's a questions section at the end, if I can get to it, I will. That would be the end of Chapter 1 in six days. That's pretty impressive. And uh, then I've got a little treat at the end that I want to take everybody through. So stick around. Um, welcome to the show! Okay, let's get into the show corrections. So this is um, over here. Um, I have um, some submissions here. So Caroline says, um, table versus tableau. Uh, this is a table versus a picture. Thank you Caroline for helping me with that. Uh, Caroline says, "How to pronounce fui-" fruit? How to pronounce fruit? Fui, there's no t at the end, I was saying fweet. That's silly, why would I do that? So thanks again Caroline. Uh, Iliana says, "How to pronounce or is helping me pronounce el-é-là-j." She says, "You say allà-j," kinda like Elijah, allà-j. Um, I haven't heard that in context, but thanks, I'll be on the lookout for it. Um, Sam of Sweet Crude is helping me to pronounce rubber, because I can't do it. Um, he says, "It's le cat de cook, le cat to cook, le cat de cook." Let's look at that word again. Le, le cat de cook. So thanks Sam, thanks for watching man, really appreciate it. Le cat de cook. Uh, Sam again says, "How to say, uh, I'm a beginner?" Okay, I, last show I said, "Je suis débutant." And uh, then I got piled on, a bunch of people said, they just laughed at me. What's up with that? That's mean! Don't laugh at me! Um, and so I thought what they were saying was, I left out the article. Now, I heard that you're not supposed to put the article, but I did it. I didn't do it, because that's what I heard, anyway. So I added it here, "Je suis un" or "un" débutant. But I followed up and it's more than that, it's, it was because I put the "t" at the end. That means, that's more feminine and it was my fault. So here's, here's the way to do this, it's actually-
Je suis un débutant.
Je suis un débutant, like no t. Je suis un débutant. And then the feminine-
Je suis une débutante.
Je, je suis une fa-but-tante. Je suis un débutante. Da na 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 na. That's kinda what I hear there, but- Je suis un débutante. With a t, hard t, un and hard t. So hey, thanks guys for making fun of me there, you helped me learn. So jokes on you. Uh, anyway, thanks for the help, if anybody drops anything in the chat, I will add it to our corrections list for the episode. And um, we'll do it that way. Great. Uh, okay, we're gonna jump into some flash, oh, it didn't start at the beginning, why? Uh, I'm gonna just rip through these real fast. And then we will be on our way. Uh, Chapter 1, we're six days in and I'm on my way to making these uh, into long-term memory uh, words that I know. If that's the right word, that's not the right way to say that, even in English, okay. À la maison, at home. Accrocher, to hang. À la dans, uh, to go into. Une assiette, a plate. Aussi, also. Avec, with. Un bateau, a boat. Blanche, blanche, white. Bois, wooden. Un breuvage, is beverage. Le cat de cook, thanks Sam, did it right. Rubber. Ceci, euh, ceci, ce, of. Oh, this, what? What did I just do? This. Ah, so close man. Une chaise, a chair. Un chat, un chat, uh, this is a cat. Un chien, un, un chien, une chienne. Dog. Le coin, the corner. Oh, let me flash it, yep. Comfortable, is comfortable. Agréable is nice, cozy. Courir, is to run.
Courir.
Courir, getting close on that pronunciation. Une collier, is a spoon. Yes, get outta here star. I got you this time. Uh, chien, welcome to the show! La cuisine, the kitchen! Dans, in, de, of. De l'autre côté, or à travers de. This is a ra-, across from, I almost said around the corner, but it's no, across from. I'll start it, just keeping me honest, thanks guys. Derrière, behind. Uh, da da, low water. Et, and, être, to be. Lévier, washer, sink. Oh, I don't have my sound effects on? That's lame. Buzzer, okay. La fenêtre, a port, uh, no, window, port is door, come on dude. La fleur, uh, flower. Le four, not to be confused with the stove. Une fourchette, this is a fork. Le gaz, is gas. Le grill pan, toaster. Le gris, oh, gris, gris, is gray. Gros, grand, uh, this is large, big. Il y a, there is, there are. Il est, ce, ce, cet, ce, cet, il, e. Uh, going too fast. Uh, he, she, it, yes. Image, is an image. Uh, it said picture, but it's image, whatever, okay. Splitting hairs here guys. Jardin.
Jardin.
Jardin, jardin. Meri-, English, we wanted to say like- Jardine, but it's jardin, okay. Uh, jaun, yellow. Jolies, belles, beautiful people, pretty, beautiful people. La vise, is the washer. Okay, lumière, lights. Luster, chen-, chandelier, is a chandelier. Uh, machine à café, is the coffee maker. Mélaxeur, this is the blender. Mélangeur, this is the mixer. Merci. Me-, métal.
Metal.
Nope, gotta keep moving. Murce, uh, wall. Nap, the tablecloth. Uh, non, il n'est pas, nope, there's nothing, there aren't any. Nous, is we, us. Un nouveau, nouvelle, neuve, neuve, this is new. Où, or. Où, where. Oui, yes. Petit, petit, small. Pitiner, oh, pitiner. This is to trample.
Pitiner.
Pitiner, oh, that's pretty close. Placard, cupboard, garde-robe, this is a wardrobe. Or like a, yeah, wardrobe. Bibliothèque, bookshelf, heck yeah. Plafond, this is the ceiling. Poignée, it's a handle, gotta get a handle in life, because it's poignant. Hey, it worked, okay? Um, look, if you're not catching on on the inside joke, you gotta go watch the other shows. I don't have time to catch you up on what happened last episode, so go watch the last episode and you'll get that reference. Alright, moving on. Poisson, fish. Port, door. Poulet, chicken. Porf, pour, près, um, near, proche, near. Prop, clean. Uh, prudente, prudente. Pudant, prudente, uh, careful, be careful. Uh, quoi, que quoi, quel.
Que, quoi, quel.
Réfrigérateur, uh, frigo, is a refrigerator. Ronde, ronde, round. Rouge, red, it's all dirty. Sècheur, dryer, yes. Serviette, uh, napkin, towel. Spessu, spessus, this spacious. Ce, en, sur la droite, on the right, right? Don't second guess yourself. Sur la gauche, on the left. Sur le dessus, uh, on top of, yeah. Tasse, this is a cup. Tiner, uh, this is, uh, to stand. Te, tea. Teer.
Teer.
Teer, is a cup, uh, teacup holder, tea, teapot. Teacup holder, no.
Teer.
Okay, brain spaced, but I don't know, we'll, we'll keep it in there. Twa, this is a roof. Uh, vessiel, assiettes, plates, oh, dishes, okay. Vere, this is a glass. Vere, is green. Vesta, entre, this is a hallway or a hall. Uh, vier, vue, vier, this is old. Ville, ville, uh, city. Voler, to steal. Vouloir, to want. Boom, I think that's it, right? Oh yeah! Dude, we did that so fast! I only missed a couple. Um, okay, aren't you proud of me? This is like A1 basic stuff, you're like, dude, you don't know what you're doing. Um, and you would be right, I don't. Um, okay, I think it's time for bookwork. So we're gonna go to Camera 3. And look, I've added myself up in the corner so you can follow me, uh, this time. Okay, I've lost my pencil though. Now I don't want you to see me. Oh god, okay. Does this one have anything in it? What happened? I just had it, oh. It's right in front of me, it's on the piano, got it. Okay, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna, uh, I have finished reading. Oh no, now I got a new section here that I have to finish reading. Ceci est une fourchette. Y'all can see this, okay. Ceci est une fourchette, this is a fork. Elle est sur la table. It is on the table. La fourchette est en métal. It is made of metal. Elle est propre. It is clean. Ceci est une assiette. Ceci est une assiette. This is a plate. Uh, right? This is a dish, is what it says, okay. Ceci est une assiette. Elle est sur la table de la cuisine. It is on the kitchen table. L'assiette est jaun. It is yellow. Elle est petite et belle, it is small and pretty. Ceci est une tasse, this is a cup. Elle est aussi sur la table de la cuisine. Uh, it is also on the kitchen table. La tasse est rouge. The cup is red. Un chat boit, un chat boit de l'eau dans la tasse. Uh, the cat drinks water in the cup. See. The, a cat, un chat, come on dude, articles. Un chat, uh, boit, the sh-, the cat drinks water from the cup. Un chat boit de l'eau dans la tasse. De, that's funny, a chat drinks of water, of water in the cup. Cat drinks water from the cup. It's interesting. Okay. Ceci est une collier à thé. This is a teaspoon. Wait, did I do this yesterday? I think I did. Elle est située dans une tasse, it is next to the tea, no, the cup. Uh, la collier est en métal, elle est petite. It is small and met-, metal, made of metal, okay. Um, I think the plan is to... So this next section is all, all questions, but I, I think the plan is, since I, I've got all this vocabulary down, um, pretty much at this point, I wanna read through this today without going through the translations. So I wanna read this straight now. Um, and kind of try to get used to how the groupings of these words feel and kind of get that really good like, instant remembering of what the word is and the sentence is trying to convey. Uh, without stopping to do translations. Um, let's see, my phone is blowing up. Oh, and that's my, hey, look. Yay, okay, um, let's see. So let's read this, let's do this. Ceci est une ville. Elle est grande et belle. Elle est située près de la mer. Ceci est une rue. Elle est dans la ville. La ville est large. Uh, hey, thanks Iliana. La ville est large. Uh, est propre. Iliana. My bad, that's right, Iliana, thank you. Uh... Ceci est une maison. La maison est dans la rue. Elle est propre et belle. Les murs sont blancs, sont blancs, les murs sont blancs. Le plafond est rouge. Le pro est nouveau. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm dragging this off the screen. Elle est en bois. Um... Okay, really what I should be doing is recalling that back to you. Um, we're gonna do that this time, I'm gonna stop, a couple sentences and remind everybody what this thing is. Okay. Ceci est un, ceci est un jardin. Jardin, dans, jardin, jardin. Uh, off-screen again, this is awkward. Le jardin est situé près de la maison. Elle est grande et verte. Un chien court après le poulet dans le jardin. La pentienne, pentin-, pentienne les yeux. Nous allons dans la maison. Ceci est une vestibule. Le vestibule est spacieux et confortable. La cuisine est sur la droite. La cuisine est sur le, le droite, la cuisine est sur le droite. La cuisine est large et luminose. Les murs sont jauns. Who paints their walls yellow? Le plafond est blanc. The ceiling should be white. Do, don't paint your ceiling anything else but white, come on, what are you doing? Uh, okay. Uh, il y a lustre au plafond. Elle est grosse et beau. Okay. Il est lustre, il est lustre au plafond. Il est gros, gros et blond, grosse et beau, grosse et beau. Big and pretty. Ceci est une table. Elle est grande et ronde. Il y a, il y a une nap, nap sur la table. There is a tablecloth on the table. Il y a nap sur la table. Ceci est une mélangeur. Il est, uh, il est sur la table. Elle est agréable, agréable et petite. Okay. Whew. Ah, brain break. Alright, let's do it. Ceci est un verre. This is a glass. Elle est aussi sur la table, elle est fer de s-, fer de verre. Le verre est propre. Okay, this is a glass, this is also, it is also on a table, it is made of glass. The, the glass is clean. Près de la table, près de la table, il y a une chaise. Near the table, there is a chair. Uh, it, la 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 la. Elle est en bois, it is made of wood. La chat, la chè-, the, the chaise est confortable. The chaise, chair is, the, the chaise is confortable. Uh, okay. Ceci est un réfrigérateur. Elle est cuit. Le réfrigérateur est nouveau. Il est situé dans la coin. Il y a un chat près de le réfrigérateur. There is a cat near the refrigerator. Uh, il veut voler le poisson de le, du réfrigérateur. It wants to steal the fish from the refrigerator. Uh, did it, uh... Ceci est une grille pan. Elle est place sur le, le réfrigérateur. Grille pan est petite et pratique. Ceci est une machine à café. Elle est, la place est près de l'évier. La machine à café est sale. Clean that coffee maker! Why, why do you have a dirty coffee maker? You're trying to sell this house right now, what are you doing? Uh, okay. Uh, da 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 da, ceci est, ceci est une mixeur. Uh, il est aussi sur le réfrigérateur. Uh, il est blanc. Il, uh, le mixeur est vu, est vieux. Hmm, gotta get a new one. Or maybe it's just really dependable, hmm, you know? Sometimes that old appliances are like... Just don't make them like they used to. Okay, uh, we're almost through this. Thanks for hanging on with me. Uh, da 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 da. Il y a une fenêtre de l'autre côté du réfrigérateur. There is a window across from the refrigerator. Elle est grande et propre. It is big and clean. Ceci, and we're getting close to the end here. Ceci est un bouillot. Uh, oh, I forgot to look this up. Bouillot is a kettle, that's right. Um, boulloir, but I forgot to like, look at how you say this. Ceci est un boulloir! How do you like my French accent? You guys like that? Okay. Uh, elle est sur le fl-, I'm, I'm being really like, trying to overemphasize. So if I ever go too far, if it sound like a radio host, uh, let me know. Okay. Uh, da 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 da, lost my place. Uh, elle est sur le fl-, le feu au gaz, uh, it is on the gas stove. Elle est en métal avec un poignée de cat de cook. Yes, y'all heard that? Did you hear that? I just said all those words! Uh... It is, uh, made of metal with a rubber handle. Elle est en métal avec un poignée de cat de cook. Près du refi-, près du réfrigérateur, il, il y a une lavasseill-, vessiel. Oh no, wait, oh, my camera's going good, whew, okay. Camera's still on? Whoo, screen went blank. I'm having problems with the cameras. Okay, we're almost there, I promise. Not gonna, not gonna flake out on this, we're, we're getting through this, we're determined. Um, elle est dans, uh, ceci, ceci est une placard. Il y a accroché, accroché au dessus de l'évier. Elle est en bois. There is a cupboard. Uh, it is hanging above the sink. It is made of wood. Ceci est une serviette. Uh, this is a napkin. Elle est dans le placard de la cuisine. It is in the cu-, kitchen counter, kitchen cupboard. Elle est petite et propre, it is small and clean. Everything's clean, except for that dang coffee maker. Ceci est une image. Uh, elle est sur le mur. Uh, elle est sur le mur. This image is on the wall. Il y a la mer et un bateau dans le tableau. Uh, this is, uh, there is a, there is the sea and a boat on, in the picture. Uh, bonjour nom. Uh, da 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 da. Ceci est la table de la cuisine. Ceci, okay, I can say that faster. Ceci dé-, no, no, I can't. Ceci est la table de la, de la cuisine. This is the kitchen table. Uh, elle est située dans la coin. Dans la coin! That's obnoxious. Elle est située dans la coin. Uh, elle est large et, elle est large et en bois. It's large and made of wood, uh, and then we just did this, but I'm gonna read through it. Anyway, to finish it off and feel good about my day, because America... Ceci est une fourchette. Uh, elle est sur la table. La fourchette est en métal, elle est propre. Uh, this is a fork, the fork is on the table. The fork is made of metal and it is clean. Ceci est une assiette. This is a dish. Elle est sur la table de la cuisine. It is on the kitchen table. Assiette est jaun. It, the dish is yellow. Elle est petite et belle. It is small and pretty, beautiful. Ceci est une tasse, this is a cup. Elle est aussi sur la table de cuisine. It is also on the kitchen table. La cuisine est rouge. Uh, the, oh, I said cuisine. La tasse est rouge, okay. Uh, un chat boit de l'eau dans la tasse. The cat drinks water from the, the cup. Un chat boit de l'eau dans la tasse. Ceci est une collier à thé. This is a teaspoon. Uh, il y est situé dans la tasse. It is, it's near the cup. La cuillère est en métal et elle est petite. Okay. Hooray! Okay, so we got through all of Section B, we're feeling really good at it. So um, on tomorrow... Oh gosh, that's the wrong thing, sorry about that. Uh, on... Really rehearsed over here. Uh, on tomorrow's episode, we're gonna do all these questions, which will be fun. So we're gonna ask about all those vocabulary words we just learned. Um, and because it is 4th of July and I like to do listening, um, we're gonna listen to my favorite 4th of July speech. Every 4th of July, to live 4th of July! Tous les ju-, 4 juillet, uh, I watch, je regarde, uh, ju-, uh, ju de l'impendance, en pendance. Uh, Independence Day. The great 1996 classic featuring Will Smith and um, and um, oh my god! What is his name? What am I doing? Uh, what is happening? Did I forget? It's not important, but now I gotta... Wi- Independence Day movie featuring Will Smith and Jeff Goldblum, you dummy? Anyway, one of the greatest speeches ever is uh, the Independence Day speech. So we're gonna listen to it in French.